Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call to order this special meeting of the Killingley Engineering and Water Course Commission. This is considered a special meeting since we did cancel last week's due to the holiday festivities. So we'll start with the roll call.
Sandy Eggers.
Here.
Paul Archer.
Here.
Chris McDonald.
Here.
Karina Torey present.
And Rodney did give notification that he would not be able to make it.
Yep.
First item would be adoption of the minutes of the May 1st, 2023 meeting. And I believe we should have May and June minutes, right?
Uh...
Is that what's here?
June is what was in the packet.
All right, so it is June?
Just June.
We did it, did we adopt? For some reason, I was thinking there was something that we didn't adopt minutes, or was that something else somewhere else?
Um...
Yeah.
Okay, and that got corrected, and I have, yeah. So we'll, we'll, those will be in next month.
So there's, so that's not my...
No, there was, there was a page I was missing.
You never know if I hallucinate.
No, you're good. So I will make sure May gets in there, but June, June is good.
June is here.
Yep.
All right, then we do have the minutes of the June meeting before us. Is there a motion on those?
Motion to adopt the minutes for June?
Motion's made and seconded to approve the application, I mean, to approve the minutes of the May 1st, 2023.
June.
No, wait a minute, this is saying on here.
June 6th.
June, there's something screwy on here. I'm looking at the other ones, that's why. On the June 6th, 2023 regular meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Here it is, I keep looking at these other ones.
I know.
Oh, boy. All right.
Yeah, go ahead.
And we do, we do need to note though that we still have to make sure of May.
Yeah, the May, the May ones I will include, yep. I have the corrected ones, yep, they're, they're all good, yeah.
Okay. All right. Our first item would be citizens' participation. It does not look like we have anyone here to address us, is there anything else that came in, or would it be under correspondence?
I have one that, but we'll do later during correspondence.
Okay.
Yep.
That sounds fine. Okay, we have one item, it's unfinished business, application 23-1567 of Dan St. Laurent for construction of a single-family home at 39 Shippey Schoolhouse Road, and we had a site walk scheduled there for an hour ago, and because of the questionable weather, we did cancel it, so we'll go from there.
Thank you. For the record, Norm Tebow, Killingley Engineering Associates. Like you said, this is a, a single-family home, a little over 11 acres of land with access off of Shippey Schoolhouse Road. The, our client purchased the lot, a good portion of it had been, been cleared already, and, and actually before he actually contacted us to do the work, he was kind of continuing to do work out there. So when we went out to do the survey, kind of told him, hey, you know, you better calm down out here, it's not a good idea that you, you keep on working. So he's got, he's got a driveway in, what, what you see here is our actual driveway design. He's got a portion of a driveway sort of pushed a little more to the north. It's very steep, it doesn't really meet any of the, the town's driveway ordinance requirements, so...
Was that something that was already there, and he just used it?
It was, it was, yeah, a portion of it was there, and then he started sort of, you know, adding to it. The, so when, you know, we, we sent Joe Therau out there to actually delineate the wetlands you had requested last month, that we have them delineated, which we did, and, and we have the actual wetland locations shown on the plan. They, they don't really have, they don't vary that much from the original Mike Schaefer delineation that was done, gosh, I think like 2001 or something like that, very, very...
But there's so many of the flags and stuff in place though, that's probably one of the tougher things.
Uh, no.
Actually out there.
They're out there now, but, yeah, but they, they weren't out there, none of, none of Mike's stuff, I mean, you're talking, it was close to 20, it was close to 20 years ago, so there was nothing left out there. So, pardon me?
It looks like it moved about 20 feet.
Well, near the dam, near the dam it did.
Only because still have the leader on you from your old one that said 200 foot up in review area.
Yep.
But it doesn't go to...
Doesn't go to it, yeah. The only, the only place, I'll show, point out the place that, the only one place it really changed significantly is where, the area where the dam is, because that, that dam has been breached, it's, it's no longer, it's no longer functional, and, and it was breached naturally at some time ago. It wasn't that anybody did it, it looks like it just kind of collapsed at, you know, who knows when. But it's not a functioning dam any, any longer. We tried to do a little research to kind of see when it was actually there, or what it was used for, but really couldn't find anything. You know, sometimes you look at the old aerial photographs and try to see, but there's nothing really apparent as to, you know, what...
It's kind of cool to figure it out.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we always try to figure that stuff out. We've got a lot of old mapping hang up in the office that shows, you know, a lot of the old settlements in the area, and, you know, and some of the maps that were put out in the, you know, in the mid to late 1800s or earlier, actually have the names of the families right on the maps, and they're, they're pretty cool. You know, if you, you take a look at these things, and you can actually see where different portions of towns, of the town, and different areas were named after, or different streets, because they actually named after families that were around 150 years ago. But I regress. So we, we went out and noted that he, he didn't have any kind of erosion or sedimentation controls in place, no silt fence, no hay bales or anything. We did advise him to do it, we went out there and directed him the area to, to, to put these things in, and he did have silt fence in, but he had, there were a couple of big storm events, there was one portion of the silt fence that got knocked down, and there was other areas that were really filled up. Went back, put some hay bales in, re, reconstructed the silt fence, and that's kind of where we are right now, we're just trying to, you know, encourage him to keep up with the erosion and sedimentation controls that, that he has out there and, and to check them.
And we didn't go out, so there's that, there's that much loose material that you guys are just trying to hold it in place now?
We're, we're just trying to keep it in control. This is about an acre and a half of, of open land out there right now. And I guess, I guess the one fortunate thing is that, you know, when it does get down to the bottom of the driveway and prior to the wetlands, it does flatten out. But if you read Joe Thero's report, I mean, there is sedimentation in the wetlands that occurred prior to him putting any of the erosion controls up. Joe is recommending to not go in there and remove it, because the vegetation's kind of growing through it. There is one area he is, he's recommending that we, that he ultimately put some wetland shrubs in around the perimeter, and that would be...
Right in this area over here?
That's because, that's, that's kind of the area where we had the most impact to it. It does not appear that any of the sedimentation is actually getting all the way down to the stream, which is a good thing. But, you know, we're, you know, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it and tell you it's no big deal, because, I mean, the reason why we've been on them and trying to keep this in control is to make sure that we don't have any direct impacts to the stream itself.
All right, you want to give us your rundown on what's going on with the staff?
So, um...
You've been out there.
I've been out there, the applicant and, and the engineer have been very proactive in keeping the town informed of kind of what's going on. Since Joe's report, the applicant has installed the ENS around the perimeter and is trying to maintain it and keep it. There was a couple areas that were needing some improvement, some of the hay bales weren't staked, for instance, and it caused an additional failure. But we've also had some pretty unique weather in the last, you know, days, including today, but why... I was gonna try to give you guys an updated pictures, because I had a feeling with the weather, we weren't gonna be able to have the site visit today. So I tried to get there early enough this morning, but it was too late. The driveway was just, I was sinking, so that wasn't happening. But I went there on the 4th, looked at it on the 4th, because the applicant had the stuff up, and he had reached out for us to check, so I had a few minutes before our barbecue to go check it out. So went through there, it was pretty good. Unfortunately, as I was leaving, there was a big storm coming, so, and he's already, I think, chased after some of that damage that kind of occurred there in terms of re-establishing some of the silt fence in different spots. The main items that we're looking at are kind of outs, they're within the review area, but they are, have more to do with our engineering department, is the driveway. Dave has looked at the plans, and he's given some comments over to Norm, that was today, to go through some of the stuff, kind of assuming that some of those could be worked out either conditionally, or, you know, as, as we've progressed with the application. So I'm not sure if the commission wants to do a site visit, if, most likely if we are gonna do a site visit would be next month, where, because of this being a special meeting, the August meeting is...
Coming up soon.
Coming up pretty soon.
Right. And we, and we have no objection to that. Dave's, Dave's comments are, there weren't many, he just had a couple of, a couple of things. He just wanted to me to provide a drainage computation for the riprap swale, to make sure it was sized properly, put the driveway, the standard Killingley driveway detail on the plans, and also call out a spec for the, for the driveway subbase material, because what's happening right now is that Mr. St. Laurent has been taking material from one spot on the site, you know, out of the regulated area, and, and then constructing his driveway, but it's...
Sounds like there is no bottom, the way he was just talking.
There's, there's no, it's, it's not, it's not structurally sound.
There is no, yeah.
You know, it's, it's not the type of material that you, you would typically use for a driveway.
More of a silty.
It's, it's a, it's a silty, you know, which, you know, kind of contributes to the, to the erosion that's been going on, and, you know, and, and the stability of the driveway in general. It's, it's, it's...
How long is that driveway? What a waste.
It's a little over, little over 600 feet. It, it's short by comparison to some we've looked at, so...
This is true.
Is it, is it, is it gravel part of it paved, all paved?
Uh, well, well, he's gonna have to pave at least the portion of it going down to the house, you know, minimally, he's going to have to pave that portion, because we, we can't keep that under, you know, eight, eight to 10%, you know, it's, it'll be steeper than that, so...
Right now, there's just some millings at the, at the entrance, that's about it.
Yeah, and the entrance has to be moved too, because the driveway's within 10 feet of the property line, so, that's the, if you take a look at that.
Now, is the driveway flat now, or is it, do you turn it over to...
It's, it's cross-sloped toward the swale. And that, that's where everything's going right now, actually. I mean, it's the way that, the way that the site is running off down that driveway, it's, it's going in the direction where we designed the swale, but the swale's not there yet.
Uh-huh.
So...
Must be the place to be.
Terrific curiosity for me, nothing, why wouldn't the swell go on the other side of the road? Then, then do away with the pipe going under the driveway?
Well, because of the way that it's turning, because it doesn't make sense if you're, you know, if you're super elevating in one direction, it just makes more sense for it. That's kind of where, everything's kind of leaning, so we're going to take advantage of what's happening out there and not reinvent the wheel.
NDTH has already looked at the septic, I don't know if that was mentioned, they already went to the septic, and they gave kind of their cursory first approval letter prior to town approval, essentially.
Right. Yeah, I mean, the soil testing results out here were pretty good. I mean, not, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's been sort of a, a give and take kind of process here, trying to make sure that he stays compliant out here and does the best he can. I will say that, you know, since we stepped in and intervened a little bit, he has stopped all work out there, and, and anytime we tell him that, hey, you gotta go back out there because this is happening, this is happening, he's been very cooperative, very, very proactive, and trying to address the concerns that we have.
So he hasn't owned it that long and just...
No, and I think, you know, and, and I'm not...
He just figured he bought a lot to build on?
He bought a lot to build on, and, and, and we see it, you know, a lot, especially when people are coming from out of state, he's, he's Rhode Islander, and if, hey, I come out here, I got 11 acres out in the, out in the woods, I can, I can just go, I can just do what I, what I want to do out here, and I, you know, people just don't understand. I don't wanna, you know, do it.
But it sounds like the driveway would be, is a big headache for him, if you guys don't step in and do something, never mind...
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Pushing out everywhere else.
Yeah, because, you know, even, even, even as late as early on today, when we mentioned it to him, you know, well, you know, what are you gonna do with that driveway, you know, because, you know, that material's not too good. He goes, I'm gonna put gravel on top of it. And I say, yeah...
There's no bottom.
Yeah.
There's no bottom.
It doesn't, you know, it, that'll, you're gonna be doing that every year. That's, that's the problem, you know, and if you ever, and if you, you're going to have to pave a portion of it, you don't want that underneath pavement, because that, that pavement's just gonna collapse on you.
Yeah, and, and in terms of review and everything like that, that's an item that, you know, goes all the way through even up to CO, that our engineering department's inspecting, and even bonding for if it's not being designed to plan or to their standard. So, you know, that will be something we continue on through, no matter what with the project.
This is a good example though, of where, you know, sometimes people think, why are these rules here? They are there to protect them from themselves, because, you know, they just figure it's dirt, have to drive on it.
Yeah, and, and when you go out there, you know, if, if we're gonna do the site walk next month, you're gonna see this, you know, there are some piles of brush there that, that Joe mentions in his report that are in the wetlands, but they've obviously been there for quite some time.
Yeah, and staff observed that, there's a lot of vegetation coming through the silt.
Yeah.
I, I personally don't see a problem with the plan, and I don't see where a sidewalk in another month is ever gonna change what this plan is going to be.
No, it's, I mean, we're going to continue doing what we do, and we're, we're gonna meet, you know, Dave's, Dave's request that he had today. You know, Dave gave me a call about 3 o'clock today and had his couple of comments, which I thought were, you know, pretty, pretty light. He goes, I just got three things.
The driveway up at the road is out about 300 yards, but that's...
It's just gotta be moved over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this, with the contingency that, you know, goes by...
Is it all staff recommendations?
All staff recommendations. I just, I just don't see where holding up another month and we go off our sidewalk is gonna change it.
Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
All right, motion's been made and seconded to approve application 23-1567 contingent upon the applicant meeting all of the current requirements of the staff, and that staff continue their review of, of the process as, as it develops.
Yep, okay.
All right, that's the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. We only have one item of new business, and actually, it's just really reviewing whether or not to bless it, I assume.
Yep.
Application 23-1568 of Dubois Forestry for jurisdictional ruling for timber harvest at 75 Bear Hill Road.
Yep, so this is a USCA and NCRS project dealing with forestry, as well as some wildlife management things. Thanks, Norm.
Thank you.
The request is for 29,000 board feet. One of the things that makes it somewhat unique, there is one crossing, pre-existing crossing on the forestry road. So staff did go out and inspect it. During that process, we caught a very fresh illegal dump of trash, which has already been tracked down and addressed by the Killingley Police, so we're happy working with them on that. You know, throwing out those Amazon boxes, got your name and address, makes it, makes it pretty easy for us.
Well, I'm sure they were pretty sure that no one was gonna go and look, and everything was gonna get rained on, and it just didn't matter.
But it, and it, there was more to it, like, it wasn't that individual, but we were able to track down who was able, did it. So fortunately, there was only a few cans in the, in the stream, and staff plucked those out. Not sure if all the material has been removed yet, I believe the forester said that his guys were gonna do that if it hadn't already been addressed. The...
Was it someone local to the area, that, that's where they normally dump stuff?
Um, I don't believe so. So the, the gate was only open for like a day for the forester and everything to get in there, and in that time period, someone just saw an opportunity, you know, to dump something in a more remote area of town, so... So that crossing, the existing culvert, is functioning, but does need to be replaced in this process. They want to upsize it from what it is currently, the, the one pipe, and the application calls for hardening of the roadway in general for this forest project. So you are dealing with an activity that potentially could be outside of jurisdictional approval, but it is ma, somewhat maintenance in, and whereas the, I guess the, some of the concrete's cracked on the pipe.
So there's always been a road here?
There's always been a road there, yeah, it's, it's very clear that this, this has been...
Where is this on Bear Hill?
Bear Hill, right before, right after where the town had, we just submitted the application for replacing the culverts.
Yep.
It's just past there, going, heading towards Rhode Island on the right-hand side, but before you drive between the ponds, you know, the little spot between the ponds, so it's right there, you'll miss it if you blink, the driveway, it's pretty overgrown, but it, it's definitely existing. That cross culvert that has been there, has been there for a long time. If I had to guess, it was just a farmer, you know, saying, we have water, and we have to, we have to cross it, and they threw in like an 8-inch pipe, but it really should be like a 10 or a 12. So USCA, and it has been working on that aspect of it, and, you know, staff feels it, it's really a maintenance thing, but it, because it is being done in the wetlands, it's not for me to decide, it's for you guys to decide. So one of the options here would be, you could rule the timber aspect to be jurisdictional, but not the road maintenance and the hardening, and request an application for that, or you could say it's all under the jurisdictional ruling, because it's really just a maintenance factor. That, that's a purview that, that's up to the commission.
Is the reality of the situation though, that if we split it and did it as permit required and jurisdictional, that, that you would never get an application, you would never get an improvement anyhow, and they would just throw down some of that?
They could, they could try to keep it as is, and then...
That's what I mean.
And, and just put material onto the roadway itself.
Paul's doing it?
Uh, so this is Donald Dubay's, out of Brooklyn, forestry, Dubois, out of forestry.
I'm pretty sure he didn't do that one.
I believe they reached out to Keith Thurlo to be the one doing the road maintenance work. That's who the forester had let us know they were using, so, but...
But it would just seem like if they were in the middle of this project, and you've got, and it's part of a USDA clearing project, they've got their staff engineers and foresters looking at it, that it's probably gonna be overdesigned even more than we tell them.
Now, what, what do you have involved in that? I mean, do you have to continually go out there and check it, or just...
So on the forestry ones in general, we try to make it a point to go out and check all crossings. And a lot of times, we don't tell the property owners or the foresters, we try to go there and just kind of see how it would look when, when they don't know we're coming. In some cases, we will coordinate, particularly on very large properties, I don't want to be out there while somebody's dropping trees in my direction, or, or anything like that, but we'll go look at the crossing. This is an existing permanent crossing, they're looking to just swap out, they're arguably not filling any more of the wetlands than what's already filled, other than maybe a miniscule amount. Working directly with USCA, who's the agency that essentially has created...
Say anything, I think it'll be overdesigned.
Our wetlands maps and soil maps that we utilize, I'm fairly confident in their abilities, but we would go and take a look at it, and even go as far as coordinating with the forester and the contractor doing the work, to go there either during or after the, the install to, to look at it, and just make sure everything is good.
I would think that, I mean, you guys may decide you want, want to head in some totally different direction, but I would think that we would want to steer them towards our typical oversizing of everything and possibly dual pipes, because we like them. And why not?
Yeah.
But if it's, but if it's really not a road, it's just use the, the logging, and that's it.
Yeah, yeah, this is purely for forestry. It's a very narrow crossing, we're talking, the whole thing is about the width of the pipe, it's a very narrow runoff. It was running when staff was there.
Because everything is.
Yeah, everything is right now, but I'm not sure if that's always running.
But if it overflows the road, who cares?
Yeah, that's true too.
Because it's not a residential crossing?
No, it's not a...
So if it overflows...
It doesn't matter.
Does not matter?
That's true too.
If they're, if they went with the dual pipe setup, although that would be our typical, they're arguably impacting more.
They're going to spread more.
Yeah.
Yeah, it probably makes more sense just to put in one good pipe.
Yeah.
Said, I'm pretty sure they've got more engineers sitting and looking at it than...
This is, this is one of the things that, if the commission is good with it, moving forward with the jurisdictional, but that, with the caveat that because USDA is looking at it, if USDA thinks that it needs to expand or come bigger, they will come back.
Perfect.
So as long as you're fine with as is presented essentially, as jurisdictional, you could look to move forward that way, and then if the project changes at all, or something really impacts, I'll be bringing it back to you. They're, they're looking at a start date of September 1st on this, so they might, in their engineering process, find that there's more, but there's a full set of plans...
I think they're over here.
With the application as well, too. I think I have them in a slightly larger size.
Do you want to look at them? Would you like to look? No. I'm thinking that they're gonna have...
More eyes on it than we have.
Yes, a lot more. So do we have a motion to ratify the jurisdictional ruling on the entire project?
I'll make a motion for application 23-1568 of Dubois, Dubois Forestry for jurisdictional ruling.
All seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now you just said there was some correspondence.
Yeah, so I got one at the, like, moments after ma, making my packet, which is usually how it works, but I was able to tack it on here to one of these ones, not even my copy, which was a existing one that we did for jurisdictional ruling for a timber harvest off of Breakneck Hill, in, in that area, where they were doing a collective of like eight or nine properties up there. This is a landlocked parcel that is adjacent, that contains no wetlands, at least according to our mapping and according to the site walks.
But they have to get to it, that's why you said have it, right?
Yeah, they have to get to it, and they're getting to it by one that was already approved as jurisdictional. So this is more like an FYI that they are kind of tacking on that additional parcel.
Who owns the parcel?
So this is Harlan Bros', it, it's, the, has an East Hartford address, but Scott Person would be the timber harvester, I believe.
No, we're just doing a, there's another parcel we're doing now that's eight acres and it's landlocked, I'm breaking the road, something.
Yeah, the, these are ones that are adjacent to a lot of Tony Pousenella's properties, so the Harlands property is 17 acres.
It's here or something like that?
And they're gonna be looking to do a timber harvest here. The one item that they said is very small timber harvest, they don't have the board footage here, which I'm sure will be tacked on to their existing notification or project through, as they notify deep, but they have walked through the property, there was no evidence of vernal pools, no evidence of wetlands, according to the official wetlands maps. This is one we probably will go out and walk, just to make sure, but this is a project we have been, started last year.
So actually, I don't think, we don't even have to act on that one.
You don't have to, that's why I, just the correspondence.
Yep.
It came in too late for me to add it to the agenda as an item anyways, but on our end, we were just gonna put it in the street file and go check on it, along with, I want to say it's like 10 other properties up there.
It was a bunch of them.
Yeah, so Mr. Pousenella, you know, in his... Yeah, um, so, um, Mr. Pousenella, you know, uh, and his, uh, forester have reached out to us in general, like throughout that project, any questions. Um, that same, uh, project, they met with, uh, the, um, land, Forest Land Trust that's, uh, right near there as well as, uh, Donna Bromwell with our Conservation Commission and, and walked, and walked some of the perimeter and, uh, because the, uh, some of the old boundary markers and stuff are not exactly clear on the southern end between there and the town, but town staff has gone through and, uh, verified based off of our mapping and G I S markers. So everything looks good.
When you mention that, uh, the, we still need somebody for open space.
Well, so the open space one.
Roddy's not here.
He already, he's already traveled that path and ran.
So open space, I do have to double check because another, uh, group looked to appoint someone to open space and on further review of the town charter, it's actually the town manager who points. Um, so we have to double check because it's, it, even though you guys can offer up somebody to her.
Oh yeah, we've run off someone.
Uh, uh, I wanna make sure, uh.
I guess we.
That we're doing the process correctly.
I'll never go.
So, I mean, if anyone's interested, I can get your name in the hat, but I will double check with Mary on the open space item. Okay.
All right, I think that's it then, isn't it?
That was it for correspondence.
Oh yeah, any, anything else in your little report, anything else going on?
Uh, there are no, um, other authorized agent applications. Um, the dam was breached at, um, uh, Quince Hill, um, uh, through, uh, directly through a deep application. Um, that work was being, um, done through the Wish Company, uh, with Keith Urlo as their main agent working on that. Keith, who has been reaching out to us, he used some cordage, um, and I think he had, uh, Jeff Page's guys clear about eighty feet of timber on top of the dam and opened it up, but they were fighting a beaver for like a month and a half up there, um, that kept re- re-blocking it, so.
Who deals with that because, um, actually when we were all sitting around on Fourth of July, Fred Schram's and Fred Schram and his wife, Mary Ann, were at the house and they're on Chestnut Hill, ju- in, in that area. Apparently they've got the beavers almost ready to come up over the road.
So if, eh, if it's directly impacting one of our, um, drainage easements or cross culverts, you can rea- reach out to the Highway Garage. Um, in the past, the town's utilized a trapper, uh, within season with, with a license. Connecticut is one of the states though on private property. Um, we don't have, other, other than a very narrow window, which would involve the town council, uh, and it threatening a roadway, um, we don't have, um, a very clear or an easy path to go on to somebody's property, say without their permission, um, and, and clear. Um, if they are cooperative with the town and it's threatening a roadway, that's great. Um, but we've seen in the past, I think you're.
The great beaver wars.
The, there's been some properties in the past that have been, uh.
This wouldn't involve a beaver war, they just don't wanna have to be the ones that have to trap it or whatever, but they don't want the neighbors or the road flooded or annoyed.
So if they're concerned about the road, I would, I would have them reach out directly with, um, either Robert or Matt at the Highway Garage, um, and they could look at it to see.
Fred only retired from them a few months ago, he probably just didn't even think of it or wanna bother.
Yeah, and it, it's usually not our guys that go and trap them. Uh, but they will look at it to make sure we have an easement or we have jurisdiction to clear or to maintain the area. So if they're particularly blocking one of our pipes, uh, we can have our guys go clear it, uh, but if it gets to the level where we need to trap it, um, we can hire somebody to do that.
No, it's, it's just having to come up somehow in the conversation.
Yep.
I don't know why.
Highway's always on my road.
Yep.
Squaw Rock, getting that swamp, they, they was always jamming up that place.
Yep, Squaw Rock was one, um.
Matter of fact, they did it not too long ago and it's already starting to damage again. There, there must be about a dozen of these now.
Yeah, yeah, which.
I see them at the back.
Some of those property owners weren't as cooperative, um, whereas, uh, on some of the other properties, we have, you know, an easement, um, and, uh, we can do that. So, um, Chase Reservoir, we get some, uh, Chase Reservoir that the guys have to clear every year. And the state also has a group that goes out and does state roads for that as well.
How about Comeran, so can we hear you get rid of Comeran?
I would contact Connecticut deep directly. Uh, I believe you can get a, uh, a trapping license if it's har- um, or, um, a, uh, license to, um, eradicate them. Uh, if, if they, uh, um.
Don't worry.
Are directly threatening the, the ecological system of the pond. They eat a lot of fish.
What?
Bird.
It's a bird?
It's a bird. Yeah, they're, they're, they're protected, but I believe they're also considered, um, invasive, right? They're not native to the, are, are they native?
They are not native, but they, and they just keep getting harder and harder. There's a pack at Alexander's Lake now about twenty-four.
Wow.
Yeah, well, that would, that would be a request directly with the state. I think they would go and look at and some, and same with some of the aquatics at some of these larger, like, uh, for invasive, um, plant species and whatnot. You have to go with, through the state directly to see about, um, addressing them. In some cases, they notify us, um, but for the wildlife species, that's directly through da- deep. I don't believe we have town council liaison.
Nope, no one's here.
And that's all I have.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Nice and early.
Good.